And I'd like to welcome everyone who's here tonight. I'm Mayor Rick Rosenberg. I'm the Mayor of Santa Clara. What I'm going to do is ask, just go around the table up front and have each council member, mayor and staff introduce themselves, state their name. Just so everybody's voice is on the recorder since this is going to be, these minutes are going to be transposed by two different recorders. That may not be as familiar with everybody's voices as they are at home. So, extent, I'm Mayor Rick Rosenberg, Santa Clara.
Lena Mathis, Councilwoman, Santa Clara.
Ben Shakespeare, Councilmember, Santa Clara.
I'm Matt Entz. My law firm, Snow Jensen &amp; Reese, is the Santa Clara City Attorney.
Dale Coon, I'm the City Manager and City Attorney for Ivan City.
Mike Scott, City Council Ivans.
Dennis Mayer, City Council Ivans.
Chris Hard.
Chris Hard, Ivan City Mayor.
Jenny Johnson, Ivan City Councilmember.
Adele Murphy, Ivan City Council.
Lance Anderson, Ivan City Council.
Jared Waite, Santa Clara City Council.
Danny Drake, Santa Clara City Council.
Krista Hinton, Santa Clara City Council.
Great. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate that and welcome. We appreciate having the Ivan City Council and Mayor join us in what I hope will be many joint meetings as we go forward to discuss some of the things that we're in partnership on. We'll begin the working agenda in a few minutes. I did want to go through a couple of guidelines tonight that'll cover this meeting. First of which, this is not a public hearing. Public comment will not be accepted. During the meeting, we've had special presentations prepared for review of both councils and staff. If you do have comments that you would like to make to either council, you're free to contact them via their email or via the city, get ahold of the city managers or city recorders and get those comments and and they will pass them on to us, but we'll be not taking public comment during the meeting tonight. We'd ask that interruptions to the presentations be held to a minimum tonight, that we get through the presentation and then there'll be an opportunity for council to ask questions of the presenters and for some open discussion between the two councils. That's really why we're here is to discuss these issues between the councils. There's been a lot of discussion that's gone on to get us to this point. We're trying to determine some options moving forward and we really want to have that discussion. If we get any outbursts from the audience, I will ask you to be removed. So, please keep control during the meeting. I know this is an emotional subject and I'm asking for restraint tonight as we discuss what to do moving forward. Also, there'll be no specific discussion of personnel tonight. Anything that is reserved for a work meeting to discuss competence or personnel, this is not an appeal hearing. This is not to be discussed personal actions. Those are subjects for city council's executive sessions and this is not an executive session. So, please refrain from discussions, accusations, anything that way that would be reserved for a work meeting. And it's not an appeal meeting. Having said that, we'd go ahead and get started with the first presentation. Lieutenant Studley and Bob Flowers are here from SCI, from the Police Department. We've asked them to lead off with a presentation regarding the police. For those of you that don't know, Santa Clara and Ivans have interlocal agreements for our Police Department, for our Fire Department, in addition to our court, our Justice Court. And so, we have multiple, or multiple things that we are partners with. We're going to lead off tonight with a presentation from the police. Chief?
No, I'm okay. Thank you, council, for this opportunity. I've asked Lieutenant Studley to I've asked Lieutenant Studley to prepare this document for you. It's kind of a little historical where we started, where we're at. It's really quick. The the overheads are simply for you to view and then he'll give you some detail and then I will conclude it with kind of a wrap-up. Some really good information there. So, I'm just not going to waste any time and turn it right over to Lieutenant Studley.
I hope this works. Hot seat here. Let me make sure this works. Is it the top? You can tell me when to move to the next slide. Okay. So, thanks for the opportunity to put this together so you guys can understand kind of where we've been, where we, who we are, and then where we're going. So, this is, we're going to do this in three sections. So, this isn't something that you guys don't already know, but the progression of the past 10 years' growth, we've shown up here. The green would be Santa Clara City and that's grown since 2012 to 2021 at a rate of around 21%. And then Ivan City's done the same from 2012 to 2021 at 25%. And that blue line at the very top, that's our jurisdictional area where we've seen a population increase from before we started in 2012 until 2021. And again, you can just see that those, what those numbers are. So, second here, we wanted to explain to you what our call volume was. So, while the population's risen 23%, as you can see, that bar's kind of showing over the top of where that is, but that starts in 2013 from when we merged as a police department. So, from 2013 until 2021, we've seen a 31.6% increase in our call volume. And then, as you can see, that 2021 there on the end, that is one month past the six-month mark. So, we're all way, already halfway between, you can see that we'll, we'll exceed that, that number from last year, continuing that up. And I just wanted to note that before before the merger, or when we merged, we had 14 full-time officers and one code enforcement. And again, here we are, this many years later, we have 15 full-time officers with one full-time code enforcement. Here, we want to show you our response times. Where that bar is, that's 2017, 2018, and then you can see 19, 20, and 21. That is our response times. We gave you a five-year historical on that. As you can see, in 17, we had an average response time of 7 minutes and 26 seconds. It was nearly the same the next year. And then for 2019, 20, and 21, you can see we did some things. We made some changes where we adjusted our manpower. We moved to 12-hour shifts so that we could better place resources on the street. It actually put more officers on the street. So, that was a good thing we did. You can see it took over a minute off of our response times. So, this is us. We're 16 full-time officers, 15 patrolmen with one code enforcement officer. Our average calls per officer per shift is five. We serve that population around 17,000 officers and that puts us at an officer-to-citizen ratio that's .92 to 1,000. So, why is, why is that important? We'll move on to the next one. I wanted to show you where we're at compared to other agencies in Washington County. So, you can kind of see where we're at there. At the bottom row, officer per citizen, we're .92 per thousand. Hurricane City is 1.51 per thousand. Washington City, again, you can see those. Calls per shift per person, we're currently staffing again. Each officer per shift is five for Santa Clara. Hurricane City might be doing a little bit better at 3.8. Washington City, right where we're at, and then St. George, a little heavier. The populations are on top. And then how many officers each entity has is right there, the second line down. We wanted to show you that. The FBI reports that agencies, our jurisdictional size is 2.4 officers per 1,000 residents. We're kind of sitting behind that ball. Utah is 1.7 on average and then we're sitting at 1 point, point, excuse me, .92 per thousand. So, our goal would be that we could move to something a little more feasible and that would be one per thousand. I know that seems a little minute, but we're on, we're on track to do that. And again, this information on the top, that was obtained from biggestuscities.com and they use US Census info for that. So, we have a five-year growth plan that we put together. We anticipate the next five years based on those things that we saw that we would have 11.5 increase in population in the next five years. Again, these are, these are rough numbers. And then a 17.5 increase in our calls of service. And so, that roughly translates to 2.3 population increase a year and then 3.5 call volume. And so, the next slide here just goes over the budget that we've basically prepared. We want to kind of talk about some of those things that we put in our new budget. The request anyways. We're requesting one new officer. So, to keep with one with 1,000, we figured that will be roughly over 20,000 people in the next five years. That's the 27, 28 budget year. And in doing that, we would need to be adding four officers between now and then. We'd like to start with that, the 23, 24 year, adding a new vehicle to the fleet. The Axon contract, that's something that we need to add into our budget. It's roughly $34,500 a year. It's a file sharing that we're going to be forced into. The Washington County Attorney Office is requiring that we media share our body cameras that are mandated so that we can share that information from our officers to them for cases for review. So, we'll be led down the road and into that contract with them. And again, that's factored into that. And also with our accreditation, we're going to be required to do better things. I'm sure none of you have heard we've been accredited, right? Hopefully you all have. So, we went through that process. It was daunting, but there are some expectations that were required to uphold. And part of that is better training. So, we've requested 25% increase in our training budget. And the main thing that that incorporates is the fact that we have an additional 16 hours that Utah Post is requiring for mental health and that includes autism awareness and de-escalation training techniques so that we are obviously better officers. Next one. This is our projected five-year staffing, how we could get to one in 1,000. We would ask that in 23, 24, we get one with another vehicle allotment. 24, 25, we would ask for another officer as well. 25, 26, again clerical staff, 26, 27, another officer and another vehicle allotment, and then 27, 28, one more officer, bringing us to that July 1st, 2027 date that we would have the four officers and the population that matched the 1 to 1,000. And then Chief Flowers wanted to discuss animal control for a minute.
Yeah. Part of the animal control. We're busy. Both cities are busy with our animals and it's something that we don't often talk a lot about, but in the next year or the following year, we need to take, we have, we need to take one of our part-time and make them a full-time employee. What we generally have done is taken our vehicles of patrol and moved them down to the animal folks. And so, that's one of the things we would do. And then, at some point, both cities are going to have to invest a little, little bit in our animal shelters. Santa Clara also and the city of Ivans. So, the reason why is our, we're just kind of outgrowing the shelter, but we have two good shelters. But there needs to be some improvement for the animals. That, so that was one of the reasons why I would probably request. I know it's not a real, on everybody's agenda, but the, the animal situation sometimes can get a little out of control. Another thing that we do as part of our agreement with the county is when they encounter animals in the unincorporated area, we have agreed to help them with that and in turn, we use the range. So, it's been a pretty nice relationship. But there's been times when the animals in our shelter have been county animals and it's been okay. I mean, it's just a deal we worked out with them as good partners. And so, we, we certainly want to move on with that. So, just so in the back of your mind, you know, we don't normally come in and talk a lot about the animal shelter, but those are some demands that are coming our way. I would like to have a little work done in the Santa Clara shelter, some updating with a few things in the cages and things. So, is that it for your? So, just kind of wrapping up what Jared said, we've done some really great things. When we started managing time, what we also manage is patrol, what they do on their time when they're, for instance, we run about 30% obligated time. With those five calls, on the average, they take an hour apiece. And then, once you do the call, you've got to write the report. One of the things I measure and when I make requests for officers, it's not necessarily the federal recommendation. I also look at the types of calls, the time we spend. Then I propose to you that when our officers get over 50, 50% of their time obligated, that means I go from call to call to call to call. You lose, you lose something there. Some of our cities in Washington County are starting to face that. Our call volume per officer is the same as everybody else. We've, we've done some things a little bit differently because we're able to. We've, we've modernized our weaponry. We've, you've been really great with our cameras. One of the things we've saved money there on this thing is, is Axon contract is that we were doing our own storage. And we just can't do that anymore. It's not acceptable evidentiary and citizens prefer it to work a little bit differently. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at there. I've also, in the budget recommendation that we're putting forward, our budget is mainly 80% personnel, maybe higher. Our costs are all in personnel. We've received a lot of money for our equipment based on grants that Sergeant Hallman has been able to go out there and get our radars, our portable PBTs, some of our cameras. Now, this Axon program, it updates our, our TASER program. The camera comes up automatically and they store the equipment for us and then they just make requests and it can be provided that way. That's sort of been forced on us. So, also I have, and, and I know, I always think that sooner or later, we're going to get wages squared around and I'm hitting my 40th year in law enforcement. And every year I've done this, it has been an issue. Good times are bad times and we're, you know, I continue to say, look, if we want to keep our officers, we're going to have to pay them. And there's a, there's a tipping point. And I've talked about this many times, that our officers go almost bi-weekly getting recruited by other agencies. And I often ask them, why do you stay here? You're making $5 a less than hour. It's the equipment. It's the way they're treated. They like the cities. They, they just like, you know, we just moved into that brand-new facility. They, they enjoy that. But there reaches a point, like for instance, we have one officer. If he was to leave now and he's getting close to his retirement, if he goes and he, they go, uh, year for year, he could make as much as eight to ten dollars more an hour. So I'm a little worried about that for our long-term, long-term employees. Uh, so I have requested a significant pay increase. Uh, that does bump up the numbers. I'm sure that's going to probably be negotiated to some level, but, uh, officers now, like for instance, the Highway Patrol, they're starting at thirty dollars an hour. You know, we're starting at about twenty-four, fifty, twenty-five, you know, right in there. But we, you, we've done really well with that. They move up pretty quickly. We pay extra for a lot of things. Um, that, that's something we're going to have to face. It's sure, I'm sure it's the same argument with firefighters. If, if you want, keep good employees, you're going to have to make it worth their while to be here, or they will move. They will. Uh, and I'm a little concerned about that. I know three of our officers was, one was approached by AMP, APMP, St. George PD, Washington's tried to still, one of our detectives now, since I've been here, and I'm going to go over there and with a big stick one day, because I'm a little tired of that. But, uh, they stay, and, and I'm grateful to that because we've been treated extremely well by the councils. One of the reasons they stay is also the great equipment that we've been able to provide. Uh, you've provided, uh, and I'd like to thank you for that. So, uh, I think our, you know, that's pretty much for our presentation. It's all outlined there for you, all of our justifications. I, the, because sometimes these cost, we have estimated our costs, like our dispatch is probably going to go up. We pay two-hundred-and-forty thousand a year, I think, something like that. Uh, one thing I will also add, one, one of the ways we keep our training costs down is we've been doing our training ourselves. For instance, we have firearms instructors. We have defensive tactics, report writing. I, I recently got certified in the autism class. So we try to do that ourselves to save the travel, but we're going to, we're, we're not going to be able to do that and, and get all the quality training that we need. Host requires forty. I like to get them at least eighty, sometimes a hundred and twenty. Um, you know, add that up. That's a month of training per officer. And so, but it pays huge dividends. So, uh, that's the conclusion. Now, we don't have anything else there on that. Okay?
Chief, question. The substation here in this building, you're moving efforts to get that operational again?
Well, we just wanted to get settled in our building. We actually talked about that last week, about moving uh, an officer, an off, and, you know, an office, maybe even doing, moving the code over here and our code enforcement and investigations. Plus, one of the things that you have to remember about co-locating like this, and we, we worried about this. When we combined, if you go back, there was, there was, there's an issue about Ivans come to Santa Clara and Santa Clara, or, or how much time we're spending in both cities. So we monitored that pretty closely, but doesn't matter which building you go to. They can come right to Santa Clara for an office and say, we need an officer, and they'll call us. They come into Ivans, we have to call an officer in. So, but we, we're going to make the efforts to do that. I was going to talk with Brock about that next week and, uh, see about where the location is, getting the keys, and talk about what we need. We've got the furniture set aside. We have every intention of spending a lot more time, and we've just been over there about a month trying to figure that out and how we could best, or I, we want to make sure citizens are comfortable with both, both arrangements. So, um,
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for, for chief? Either council?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate that eighteen percent increase in our budget.
All right, um, I've asked Matt Ants, um, the Santa Clara City Attorney, to discuss the existing agreement, the interlocal agreement, um, regarding the, the fire department, uh, particularly the separation clauses and the procedure in the event that um, that option is, is chosen, kind of what the procedure would be. Um, Matt, and I'd encourage, as part of that, uh, Dale, if you had any comments to make, feel free, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm going to try to be really brief and focus my comments on those separation, uh, provisions of the agreement, since that was the request. There's, there's essentially three ways that, that the agreement can be terminated and, and that the two cities can go their separate ways as far as, uh, providing fire service. Um, the first option is that either city has the option to withdraw from the agreement with ninety days written notice to the other city. That notice has to give, has to be given at least ninety days prior to the end of the fiscal year. The implication being that, once that notice is given, that preparations would be made for that, that withdrawal to be effective as of the end of the fiscal year. Um, the second option, uh, is that if in the review of the uh, department's budget, which occurs each year by both cities, if one of the cities, uh, did not give the required approval of the budget, uh, within a certain timeline, and that is by March first of that year, then the cities would have, uh, one month, they'd have the month of March to work out any issues and see if a, a uh, and a, an agreement could be reached, and approval of the budget could be given. But if that was not completed by April first, then that would be deemed a withdrawal, similar to the first option. Um, and that withdrawal would then, uh, become effective, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. You'll notice that, that April first deadline is roughly ninety days before the end of the fiscal year. So very similar in terms of, um, the process, once that, once that is, that, uh, 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 that option is triggered. The third option is of mutually agreed, um, dissolution of the department. Um, and that is i- in my view, sort of a different animal. Um, it doesn't have the same time limits on it. It doesn't have the same deadlines. Uh, certainly, there's, the suggestion is that if it's mutually agreed, then there would be some agreement on the details of how that would happen, uh, once the dissolution, uh, was agreed to. Um, there are implications of each of these options, including how assets would be divided, how personnel would be handled. Um, and some, some of that is addressed in the agreement, and some of it frankly would have to be worked out between the cities. But that's, that's basically the three options.
I concur. Okay. Thank you. Any question for, for Matt or Dale? About the agreement? Okay. All right, um, we're now going to have a, a presentation, um, from Chief Andrew Parker and Brock Jacobson on the, the fire department. Um, on and of where the history of that, similar to what the police did, and then transition into some options. Um, moving forward. Chief?
All right. Good evening. Hope this is, um, I think it's hopefully provide resolution, a good, I think we worked hard on finding a plan. Um, I'm excited about the presentation. I hope you guys are. Here we go. All right. So I just want to kind of give a background. Obviously, I've been here six months, but I know there's members at the table and out in the audience that have been working on this for, for years. So, um, this is one fire. I wasn't on it, but twenty-seventeen, um, there was a Christmas Eve fire. There was a fatality. And there's a lot of data in here because we want to show data. Data's going to show what we need. So, um, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at response times, where are the stations are staffed, the travel distances. Um, those things matter because they do demonstrate the type of, um, service delivery that we're giving. So here we had, uh, point-three miles away, it was truck twenty-one, one-twenty-one out of and was twenty-one minutes. And this is prior to the merge to arrive. And then Santa Clara, engine thirty-four arrived twenty-two minutes later. So that's coming from four miles away. So that's where we kind of were before the merger. Next slide. Little bit about the history, um, on the left, and this data is provided in the left, a little left-hand corner, but there are members of the audience out there. Obviously, I wasn't here, but, um, we had Mr. Hanson was nineteen ninety-nine Public Safety Chief, um, Mr. Dan Nelson, and then down to the merger on the left in twenty-eighteen. Um, Dan Nelson, Randy, Randy Hansi, and then on the right, obviously Ivans. So lots and lots of people working on this, um, this plan, and to be where we're at today, I think is a great thing. When I first came here, I looked at the profile of the city. I was excited about all that the firefighters get to do, all the response area that they get to cover. Um, I think that's a fantastic thing, and I'd like to obviously continue that service. So that's the history of it. Um, we'll go next slide. So it's, although we're not running a ton of calls, we're running a lot. The guys are running almost fifteen hundred calls a year. We're covering, again, I mentioned in previous presentations, four-hundred-and-ninety square miles. So that's really the difficulty, the, um, strain that's placed on resources. Um, especially when we'd have less staffing. It's difficult because one of those resources are out. Let's say on the ninety-one, we, we obviously have that obligation. Uh, we'll be gone for maybe an hour, two hours, um, servicing that area. So that's kind of leaving our resources behind. Um, the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, basically, we were working to get our Utah EMS standards up, regulations, and then also our, our ISO standard. So we're very, we're doing great on medical. We had two people, um, typically every day that were EMS certified, but we do have a medic, which is a paramedic. Um, certification needs to be, somebody in that station should have it. We've had a variance for eight years, um, not having to have that. So we obviously were up, as of now, this fiscal year, we're back um, in full compliance. But what we've been working on is really getting that, um, fire response up. So again, I arrived right around February twenty-eighth. We had two people. I went up to the station. Um, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But we're, um, I think the idea for me is hopefully just, uh, communication and then educating, trying to provide the details. So we're running more of an ambulance style. I worked for two private ambulance companies in my career, um, service delivery. So twelve-hour shifts. We had two people on the ambulance, and then that captain would work on a pickup truck, which was like a supervisor. So that's kind of how we were running things. Um, and again, we relied still, even though we combined, uh, relying on our volunteer response or those responding from home. So, and again, I think the bottom is kind of cut off, but the biggest thing that I observed was, hey, we have people working those twelve-hour shifts, but there were no policies for taking off. So that's where the inconsistencies of getting people to ship, and that's what my boss had talked about, my battalion chief. Everybody stressing, how do we get people here? And that's really where this whole, um, observation and then hey, saying we have a problem, and then providing a solution to it. And that's where this is going. Next slide. So first structure fire that I, um, arrived to was in Ivans. There was one person that showed up on an ambulance. Uh, they arrived in about a minute and a half. I came from Center Street Station. So from the beginning of my employment here, we went immediately to Center Street Station, myself and the battalion chief. I've been up there every day since. We come in Monday, um, through Thursday, forty-hour work week, sometimes on Friday. So we, I responded from the Center Street Station. Um, and then our fire engine, again, arrived nine minutes and nineteen seconds later. So those are just some considerations on, hey, if there's a life safety issue, we obviously want to get there as soon as we can. And that's where those folks responding from home are necessary, but we want to have that primary resource, and that's what we're going to talk about today at that Center Street, so we can provide that service. Um, and then with the neighbors assistance, basically personnel, that they were stretching garden hoses to put this thing out. Obviously, in my vehicle and the ambulance, we didn't have any water. Uh, next slide. So yeah, next slide. Once it comes up, it'll show a picture of what we were dealing with. So this was, this was on fire. Uh, we had gunpowder stored inside, uh, obviously able to get it extinguished. So that was something that um, I think is just one demonstration of some, my observations from coming and arriving and going, how is our fire service delivery? Yes, EMS, fantastic. But what does our fire service, um, del- delivery look like? And I think we can do better with it, and I think that's that Christmas Eve fire from those folks that have been employed for some time. It's, it's, let's do better. Next slide. This just shows us right off of, um, the CAD, off the incident reporting, just kind of a screenshot of it. But again, engine thirty-one, just to get in route, folks responding from home, a four-minute delay, not, not responding, that's just trying to get to the station and get in route. And that's, those are some of the difficulties if you have only a volunteer response. Uh, that's where other neighboring, uh, agencies, yes, they might have a volunteer station, but they have those primary stations distributed throughout the city to provide immediate on-scene fire suppression, rescue, and those things. So, um, this is another call that was during my time, was on April, um, third, it was in the news reported, but there was two fatalities. Um, it was a, uh, traffic accident out, out on the ninety-one. But it took twenty-seven minutes, forty-five seconds, people responding from home to arrive on scene with the fire engine. That fire engine, uh, has, houses the jaws of life, which was needed in this incident. Twelve minutes and six seconds for the ambulance, which was staffed at the Rachel Station. Two people full-time arrived on scene to provide medical care, um, to that person, but all of the while, they're trapped in their vehicle, twenty-seven minutes to get there. Then we have to start the extrication process. That could take up to another ten minutes. And so we'll go next slide. There's a picture of that. There's the jaws of life on the ground. Next slide. And that's the data from it. So on the right, it's just that not from an academic journal, but it's information we know in EMS through my paramedic training. It's, we have a golden hour. So we want to get somebody to a trauma center, level-two trauma center within that hour. So that's where the time, where I came here and I started observing that, I'm like, we need to fix this immediately. And that's when we put our fire engine, we got it certified. It wasn't certified for EMS in service immediately. Um, but those are some of the things that I observed personally. Otherwise, I just came, um, to be a fire chief, and I didn't necessarily know that these things were happening, obviously through my observation and experiences. Then we started moving for our game plan. Next, next slide. And then I just, I just say, is this an acceptable thing for us to, because I think we first have to agree, which I think we do, is is there, was there an issue with the prior staffing? Um, that's for property, that first picture, and then obviously for somebody's life. Hey, we need to, we need to work, um, and get better at this. And I think, again, our plan, I think we'll provide resolution tonight. So next slide. Um, again, is a nine-minute response time acceptable if somebody's trapped? Something we need to, we definitely think deeply, I think, about twenty-eight minutes almost, again, to get that truck on scene out on the highway. Um, and so, again, we, what we did is say, hey, discussion with other fire chiefs up north in Utah. Um, looking at NFP, these are national standards. National Fire Protection Association helps us with all of our safety gear. They provide um, guidance for us. And so we didn't see the need to reinvent the wheel. So what we did is move to twenty-four-hour shifts. I think that's the biggest change for personnel and the most difficult, um, thing, but it provides the most reliable coverage. Because our workforce, if you go to four-hour shifts, now you have this wider range of, you need more staff. If you go to twelve, it reduces. If you move down to twenty-four, well, now you have less staff you need. Uh, but you can get, you'll, I'll show you some, uh, visuals. Go to next. So that's our staffing before. This is just one week. So it's right off, you can see March sixteenth. Uh, those are all the unassigned positions. And again, this is way before my time that my boss and other firefighters have been dealing with, um, trying to get staffing. And parameters, um, and policies, it's difficult. So the paramedic is blue. So that first day, you have a paramedic, and those are split for night. This is twelve-hour shift, I'm sorry, morning, like a day and a night shift. Um, the next day, no paramedic. The day after that, maybe one at night. So we had fourteen unassigned shifts. That's just for what and three different people on that second day on Monday, March fourteenth, to cover the ambulance for twenty-four hours. Three separate people. So we, what we want in the fire department is continuity, shift exchanges, crews training as a team together, just like they would do in any other city department. You want your crews working together. Um, go next slide. And that's where we're at today. That's our new staffing. That's exactly what most of the agencies here are using, the forty-eight, ninety-six schedule. Um, those other shifts, those are open shifts. So any of our, our part-timers still those bottom shifts, which is that ambulance. It's a twenty-four-hour, um, shift. So again, for the whole entire month, we now have only nine unassigned shifts, paramedic on every day. Uh, two members on the ambulance, two to three members on the fire engine. And we're going to do that for the entire year, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, just by changing our, our approach. Next slide. So from the left to the right, how do we get to that? And I put in there, which is lots of discussion, extremely tough personnel decisions. That's the bottom, bottom line, and I think, um, we can talk more about that. But that's, that's going to get us in compliance on the right-hand side, and that's where my goal is to provide Mr. and Mrs. Smith with that service delivery. People at the fire station are going to provide the service. So um, what did we do? So we moved immediately, folks were on a Kelly Day, so what would happen is the captain midship, uh, if they were over hours for, um, labor laws, they would have to go home. So let's say you had three on, you'd only have two for the rest of the shift. So we went, moved immediately to a forty-eight, ninety-six. We consulted with our neighboring agencies on how we're going to do that with FLSA laws, the time that we're going to pay them. So now everybody's, um, full-time is on a forty-eight, ninety-six rotating shift. Our part-timers, we spent several weeks trying to consult, talking with other neighboring chiefs, making sure we're in compliance of our labor laws. But we moved them basically A, A, E, But we moved them basically A, A, E, B, B, S, C, and then a double C shift. So basically what you have is. Uh, instead of having the full-time there for two days, our part-time will only come for one. So they're on one day. And off for five. And so the way we got to this, we interviewed basically all of our part-time staff that we have. Every single person we interviewed and we gave them basically the option to say, hey, we need you to commit to this. Can you do it? Um, and we also told him, hey, we need all-risk firefighters. So we need to have you um at least be willing, you don't necessarily have to have it currently, the certificate, uh certification, but we want you to be willing to move um. To structure firefighting, wildland firefighting, EMS, and then hopefully into hazers materials response. We had a hazers materials response the other day. Um, but we want to try to move towards getting. Our folks doing everything. So next slide. Um, initially we had four part-time people commit to, we have, we call it like it's a seat. Um, we currently have six. So we had six original part-time that committed to this seat. Um, kind of like a football team. Um, they all have positions. That's what we did. We assigned each person to a seat on our roster. So the ones that we didn't get, we had to advertise. So we advertised and we got a lot of applicants. We filled those um as they came in. Um, there was a two-month window where after those interviews occurred that we still had applicants. So that, that was an option for other, other folks that they wanted to come on board. They could. Um, we just a couple of weeks ago filled the last spot. So as of July one, we've been doing the twenty-four-hour rotating shifts. What are the bu- budget implications? So. Instead of a free-flow budget, a large pool of money. Where our employees will fill when they're available. Cause I looked at that and I was like, how do we have almost four hundred thousand dollars, but we're not getting. Our staffing with total of thirty-seven employees, we're not able to staff twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, one station. Um, that's. So we basically reassigned our budget, that existing part-time budget to a seat. And there's twelve positions um that are assigned. Next slide. So again, uh, twenty-eight part-time initially prior to the fiscal. Some folks were EMT, wildland firefighters, we'd have the seasonals come on. Um, we would do, some folks were cross-trained, but we had about, about three hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred to end up with this staffing model. So next slide. We've reduced that again to twelve part-time employees. Significance, cost savings. We've shared that additional remaining costs and I'll show you why we did that. Um, we'll hold here. Now go back, please. One, you know. So just, I just wanted to show that they're, they're all um working to be cross-trained. So again, we just want folks that are willing to, to do that and we're going to provide a better service. When we do that. So that's, that's that slide. And that's the staffing again at that rate. So I just want to go briefly into this. Um, I think there's communication that could be cleared up. Volunteers, part-time, is there a difference? Um, we have the same, we have, we had eight volunteers prior, we have eight volunteers now. Um, one will move to. A part-time position, one works with the county. And then we moved another part-time into that volunteer position. So if eight budgeted, this all costs money. So. Anytime we have to replace turnouts and their gear and completion is forty-five hundred dollars. Um, our uniforms are eighteen hundred dollars and that doesn't give them um a ton of backup uniforms. So these, again, we moved all this stuff so that we're in compliance, so that when somebody's opening a compartment, tool falls out on their foot, they're not wearing EMS boot, they're wearing. A firefighting boot that's approved. Um, and again, it all costs money. So we have eight budgeted positions for this year and that. Where do we want to go with that? That's, that's for you guys to decide, but we have um. Life insurance that we also pay for every employee. Some of our neighbor agencies, they're able to do, to get a lot of volunteers because they pay health insurance. So that's another consideration where we don't necessarily offer that. We offer um life insurance. So. Again, volunteers, they volunteer their time, they're not released at any time. Um, there are, there are certain things that can be released for, but they have two separate agreements, contractual. Um, work agreements that they sign. Volunteers have to make about thirty percent of their calls within their district. And again, our part-timers, um, their max is basically fifteen hundred and sixty hours a year that they work. Again, they're assigned that shift and they'll meet that maximum. Every year and they're making twenty-three to thirty-two thousand. Or our, our volunteers are getting a stipend um every few um twice a year, basically. But next slide. So again, these are just before and afters where we are today. Um, we talked about that first fire that I went on, we extinguished with the garden hose, that twenty-seven minute um time to get that truck on scene. Over here, now we have four to five people every day. So we're hoping to get obviously an aggressive fire attack with the fire out, reduce uh content and property loss. And then we'll have that two in, two out for our safety. Um, that's one thing where if we have somebody from, coming from home, we're not, it's a delay to get them on scene to back up our guys that are going inside. And you can't, you have to wait for that crew to get us on scene before you can go inside. So you're just standing outside spraying water and that's. Some of the things that we want to improve to get inside, put the fire out and then prevent that um property loss. This is a call on the bottom um out to the ninety-one, not the exact location, but it was um obviously the engine and the medic arrived right about the same time. So. Cut it, cut our time in half. Next slide. So plan, why we're all mostly here is our plan for the Center Street Station. So. It took considerable finances, planning to get to where we're at with our staffing for both cities. Um, and again, we have our current eight, eight volunteers um responding again out of that. Um, Center Street Station. Again, we're doing that. We want them to respond there. So we're, we're um showing data. We're showing that, hey, they're responding out of engine thirty-two. And then on the bottom slide, however, the staffing will not be adequate, obviously to cover the key area. That's because you need those two, you need a company officer and then a pump operator. Um, directly from ISO, I had this conversation the other day. Hey, that's what you have to have to get that station to say, hey, that, that station's open and running. Regardless, volunteers can still respond there, but we need to have them um in that station being able to do that. And the volunteers can backfill. Um. Grew up in the, around the fire service. We had volunteers at my dad's station. They were there the whole entire time I was there. Um, again, the volunteers, we want them. And I think we've shown that in our plan, the hybrid plan, continue um that process. So that's, I think, what we've done. So next slide. These are just kind of the call, calls that we run. Um, we had our fire management office to pull the data. And so nationally average, are we, what are we, do we, do we not run any fires here? Or do we run a lot? So fire calls for us are about thirty percent, ten percent are national average. Um, sixty-five percent EMS national and sixty-seven for us. Next slide. And again, this is, I think what we've, we've all come to the, the determination is, hey, primary provider. Um, we want those full-time, we need full-time people. But we also can back them up with the volunteers. And that's where I, any other industry, we have those people that are paid. Provide the primary and then maybe you have an apprentice or um somebody working with a dentist as an apprentice. Or reserve police officer, but you have that primary officer and that's what we're looking for, for the Center Street Station. So. Um, again, we're looking to move to a hybrid plan. And so what's the plan for this Center Street Station? So let's go, we've, we've, we've worked very, very hard on this. Um. But immediate staffing, that's what our plan is. And we'll have a dual, two-person daily staffing. We'll have three captains full-time and three firefighter EMTs full-time. Um, we can backfill them again, the volunteers. Hopefully this is. Recorded, but volunteers can come anytime. They can work one hour, two hours, five minutes. They can work three shifts in a row. They just need to coordinate with the captain and that's what our, our policies have been. Um, we want them to come. And again, that's being coordinated through one of our captains and. Um, but that's the plan. Hopefully they can supplement that response. So we can do both. We can get. Our medic backup and service medic thirty-two. Um, we'll be picking up roughly fifty to seventy calls more. That'll help our revenue, of course. Um, or they can take a fire call. So that's, that's the plan. Next slide. And again, here's how we do it. We're going to use existing budget funds. So we're going to take our existing budget. And we're gonna, like I said, we've reduced our profile and our staffing. Which improved our daily staffing. We're having twenty-four-hour people there all the time. But that, some of that money we've moved um to fund this op, this, these full-time positions. So. And we're also going to be using some of our wildland funds. So that's why we want everybody to be cross-trained. So like we had that fire out in Mataqua, we've, we've met with our um state agencies. Um, cooperators and those that are in charge, I won't list their names, but they're our bosses when we go on wildland fires and we're working on, we have a mutual aid agreement. In place, we have um initial actions, what they expect from us. And that's why we want everybody to go um and get their, basically be a three um. A three-disciplined person. And that's neighboring agencies to the north of us are doing the exact same thing. And that's a national model that. Hey, we don't go on wildland fires all the time. Do we need a wildland team? It's an option, but can we do it with our existing staff? Go out there, suppress a fire, try to put um hose on the ground and, and try to suppress it. And then we give it over to the state and they. Then we come back. And so we have plans, staffing, uh, policies to backfill those positions. So um, again, we'll continue to supplement it with the volunteers. So. I think that's it on that. Next slide. Continued staffing, again, as the, our police partners presented with growth and those things, that's for you guys, obviously, just to decide. But I think, again, within our existing budget, um, that's our plan. Immediately, we have the personnel um to. To staff those stations. And we do have a plan to keep the Rachel Station, obviously, at, at minimum standard. So, thank you.
Yeah. So uh, what we've done, uh, what we've represented, sorry for you, council, I have to turn and look. So in the request and line to get Center Street back up and running. And to make that happen uh, uh, as immediately as we can, and also as the most cost-saving that we can. Oh, we tasked Chief Parker to go back through his budget and figure out what could he do? Uh, what could be cut? What can we do to get the personnel that we need there to operate out of Center Street? So as he, he's presented there is to move and staff that with maybe essentially six full-time employees, we'd be. Talk about maybe five of our part-time employees into full-time and then hiring one new full-time employee that would staff that station. In that, as they, they cut out, um, you know, a lot of things throughout their, their budget, uh, supplies. We talked about wildland. Uh, there might be a philosophy change, uh, wildland, we didn't do wildland this year, so some equipment wasn't needed. So we pulled things back. That we're able to find funds. The one thing that I told them that we could not, uh, as we discussed, we just couldn't do is making sure we have the. The proper PPE and uniform allotment to make sure that we. Have the equipment they need when they go out on a fire, that we can't send them out there without having, you know, turnouts and that to fit and make sure they're safe when they're there. So. That would be, we came to a number, it's roughly eighty thousand dollars. That potentially would be the increase of the budget. Uh, would be split based on percentages, but that's uh what we, we went through, Chief Parker. And his staff went through and found that uh where we could come to. So. That's uh what we, as Chief Parker said, we proposed to move to having six full-time. We shift running out of the Center Street Station. As soon as, and potentially it'd be an eighty thousand dollar increase, just to make sure that those new, all those new uh. Staff have proper PPE and the uniform to make sure that they look professional and then are safe when they go on a call. So. Yes.
Uh, Rock, so Chief Parker had presented this staffing plan for Center Street back in probably early June. Uh, and the six full-time personnel was sort of an add-on to what was in the budget at that time, I believe. And it was about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So you mean that. It sounds like he's, you've rearranged the budget to, to take that from six hundred and twenty-five thousand, additional costs down to about eighty thousand.
Correct. And that's where that staffing profile actually gives us better staffing, but it's a reduction.
So, thank you. Just a question on that. So you've made some, you've, obviously you've adjusted on your staffing and that, you've made some cuts. Which allow this to happen in fairly immediately. Three, five years down, where is that number going to land for the cities? Is that something we have available to, to know? Cause obvi- obviously you've. You've cut supplies, we're going to need supplies in. Where ultimately does this land for both cities on, on being able to have both stations staffed with this? Is that, I mean, eighty's probably. The bottom line is it, is it a two hundred thousand dollar number? Is it a four? Is it six uh to land where we really need?
And I think that would be up to you folks or my boss to say, hey, this is the, we have the line items, this is what we're cutting. Do we want to? A lot, a lot of it's from wildlands. We have a capital purchase we were going to make. We're not going to do that this year because we want to put lives are more important than equipment. Those type of the things that we can discuss in the future. If, if, you know, I know those out in the audience have worked hard on the wildland program and. That's, those are decisions that we need to make. But that's, that's something that, yeah, next, next budget, we don't necessarily need it. We just keep doing what we're doing. And again, we're going to provide that immediate fire suppression for our state operators. Um, those folks in Canada, try to get hold of those grass fires when we can, and we're going to use them to help us like we normally would. So. They're just not going to be gone for fourteen days.
Yeah. And I ask that just for both councils, that's something we will want to have. But what do we want? You know, what is it that we expect? What do the residents expect? You hear. I, I don't think anybody wants tax increases and as everything's going through the roof, but we've got to make a decision on what. What we expect for both cities in this. I think it's a move in a great direction. Obviously the county, and that's something I, I think we've talked about for a while there. There is a pursuit to get county assistance because they do respond. We do respond all, all the way to the Nevada border. Um.
Yeah, I think that's some consideration too, is revenues. Is, is there revenue losses? Cause we're not doing the wildlands or can we send, there's options to send a single resources call. We sent a paramedic out, they would go out as one person. Just like medic thirty-two's down, we want to get that back up, getting those. So it's, it's, you move one way and moves something the other way. Basically is, is. That's, there's cause and effect to it all and we just have to make that decision. So.
Yeah. And eventually you have to pay, you can cut to make it work for the short term, but eventually we, our budgets need to. Be in line with what we want this to be um on that. And certainly, again, I, I hit on the county because there, there are funds that should be. reimbursed to both cities for those costs. And, and ultimately I believe we'll get that. I think the mayors and, and those involved are, are working. On that, but like you said, this is a great short term, but ultimately we, that, that number in my. Observation is probably in the two to five hundred thousand dollar range when we, with everything that we want, what I think, believe we want.
The, you know, Mayor Hart and I met with the, the county commission today and. I think in the county commission's eyes and, and. You can jump in, Mayor Hart is, they would probably prefer us go to some type of a fire district. A west side fire district. Um. They're in the process right now of, of implementing a fire district up SR eighteen with the, the small. Special services district areas up there. Um, they like the model that they have running with Hurricane on the east side, special fire district. And there, it, this conversation started over a year ago. And if we'd be interested in doing something like that, I, I don't, I don't know that I've heard any support from either council. On that plan. Um, they met with us today to let us know that that's still an option. Um, I don't know that uh without some significant arm twisting or legislative assistance, that we would get funds outside of a district. Um, from the county. Um, at least right now, they haven't given us any indication that. The funds may be coming. And so as we look at what we're going to do with the fire department, um, you know, going forward. I would anticipate that, you know, in next year's budget, there would be some increases. Um, not buying some of the, the things this year may pass forward into future years where at some point you're force-based with it. Some additional expansion in personnel. But I think we were thinking about that anyway, because we had, you know, a three-year plan to get the Center Street Station man. Um, that we were working toward. Um, this kind of gets that done immediately with the limited staff. Um, that can provide that increased coverage. And it fairly quickly. And it buys us a little bit of time to figure out future budgets. Um, what we're going to need supplies and what we're going to do with direction. If we go away from wildland. And focus on the service inside the communities, that changes the makeup of that budget and the equipment manpower needs. So. Buys us a little bit of time to do that.
Can they, can the county make Mataqua, everything out of our city limits in that fire district? You know, they can, but I mean, here we are, we're saying, hey, they're requiring us to do it, but that's where a lot of our, we're in terror. I mean, I know what Mataqua is, I drove that. Road two or three times a day and that destroys everything.
Yeah, I mean, this discussions can be had. I know if there's somebody out there that's hurting in distress, our guys are going anyway.
Yeah. But if they have a, if they have someone else covering the area, what, what makes us as a city have to cover that area? That's the part I don't understand.
The state?
The state EMS, uh, and Dell can. Can probably take more to it because he was part of it when it was ours, but they, they mandate our coverage area. So, so.
We're paying. We're paying the bill.
Yes. Which is what's been, as you know, I talked in back in June, there at your council and I spoke with our council. That's the thing that is, gets to be the most frustrating now is the residents of Santa Clara and Ivans and they're footing the bill for our staff to go and spend hours out on 91 when they can't be here where they ultimately need to be. And so that's why we've been pushing and talking with the county. We have a meeting next night, next week with them again to say, hey, again, where are you at to helping us out? Where if they do provide some funding, what I just talked about, then it's, it, it's a zero increase. Cause then we, we get the funds to help do that. Also potentially get more manpower to help, be it Center Street or wherever else that we can move that, that plan that we talked about. It gets even, even faster to getting to that goal. Uh, you know, as the police talked about their goal, and I mentioned in the meeting, our goal is the one, one per thousand, which would put us at, you know, their number 17, we, we said 16, but we'll go for 17. Whatever, whatever ends up being decided with councils budget-wise, but the county can play a big factor in this to help us continue moving forward if they'll, I say, pay their portion of what it's costing to the residents of Santa Clara and Ivans.
So do we, and Chief Parker has lots of data. Can we take that data to a council or to a county meeting?
Yeah.
And say, cause I, I know for a fact, you drive that truck to Metacqua. You're doing more damage on it than will happen most of the year here in town. And so I think we need to get the county, you know, does a fire district have to be contiguous? Other fire districts, maybe when they do that, when they include the rest of the county.
You know, one of the hard, the hard parts, I, I, I and Chief Parker is going to help me kind of come to more realization of this, but that they do the fire district, what's their manning actually going to be? How are they going to staff it to where the accident happens? Our people probably are still going. Because they might not have the staffing. Same reason, same thing to Gold Cross, Gold Cross gets on a call and there's a call over here off of Dixie Driver Valley View. Who's going, our, our staff is getting called. So we'd still be running and we really would not be getting anything actually back. That's why some of the.
Mutual aid agreements come into play.
Yeah, that's right.
Where, you know, if our guys are out there, St. George is covering us with mutual aid agreement.
And we're not getting any credit, we're beating up our truck.
And so the word typically into that mutual aid that especially with the new dispatch, the closest unit is responding, right? Way I understand it. And geography kind of, there's no fire station between us and there.
No.
Uh, nobody's closer than we are to that. And so it kind of gets forced on us a little bit. I think we can continue the conversation with the county, continue the request, maybe pack their chambers. On occasion, I mean, there's, there's things we can do. We've been making nice requests and using the data on the calls out there to help justify requests for funds. They're kind of saying, look, if you want money, create a special service district. I think we just keep pushing and hopefully the legislature tweaked the legislation this last year, right? Dale, as far as we can now ask for money. If we tweak them to where they mandate they pay, maybe that's a better deal. But there's work to be done there, but at least we can focus attention on it for sure.
Maybe we ought to have a presentation by Chief Parker to, uh, so the citizens can see what we're doing. And then they can go talk to the county commissioner. Cause you guys are just two, you know? And right now I wouldn't know what that means to even talk to him. So.
Actually, we've
Right here, you gotta get right.
We've actually prepared that, showing the cost to the cities that we've presented to the county EMS director. And it still doesn't resonate that they should help with the, the cost. And to be right frank with you, the legislature with the way they've created the requirement is it's the nearest.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And, and we know that we're the nearest, creating a fire district doesn't.
No, we don't want to fire it.
And the, the matter that I see is we need to continue to legislate and negotiate with the county to try and get some help.
Well, if we have our citizens going there, that's only because they represent our citizens.
Like you said, we, we need to give them that data. So they know exactly what's going on and the data is available. We know what it costs us to run out there unless you transport, you don't get any money back.
Yeah.
And even if you do transport, there's no guarantee that they're going to pay for the transport.
No.
So we don't have any recourse.
Yeah. Oh, and that's just presentation to get it out there. So.
So Councilmember Drake, former commissioner. I'm, I'm really curious as to what your take is to answer Lance's question. I'm quite sure that if a district was created with the two cities, they would require that, that that district include our current coverage area, right?
Unlock everything now.
Yeah. And, and frankly, I think that the, the county commission would prefer a single west side district. It would include everything up SR 18 as well. I don't, all the discussions I've had with Mayor Rosenberg and others is that we don't have a whole lot of interest in that. Mayor, share the, well, maybe not, this isn't, we, we didn't feel all that welcome actually when we attended a meeting up there. I don't think they had a real interest in that either. But this is the first I've heard the county suggest that this would even be a possibility to create a district that included basically our two cities and then on west. The, the money has to come from someplace though, right? If a district is created, it becomes its own taxing entity and truth and, truth and taxation. They justify everything based on, on public safety. And if, if we move this direction towards a, a greater number of full-time firefighters and EMS personnel. I mean, as you noted in, in the little letter I sent to y'all. My personal concern has always been the, the budget aspect of this. We, we just don't see where that's coming from without our city going through a truth and taxation process. And, and increasing the, the property tax available to us to cover that. I, I'd like to say, first of all, to, to Brock and Chief Parker, for you to have responded the way you have to this, this need that has become apparent to us about the, you know, manning that station, recognizing that it has been in, it has been in the plan all along. But for you to have somehow made a way to do that without us having to consume all of our, our funds to, to make that happen. We, we certainly go beyond feeling appreciative of that. But long-term, I, for, for me, and I think probably for Dale, at least the biggest concern that we have is exactly what you were asking Councilmember Shakespeare. Where, where does this go eventually in terms of dollars and how, literally, how are we going to fund it? So once again, in that little letter I sent, I sort of gave a brief history that Ivan City goes back. I, I'm, I got here in 1997, right? So in, in the early 2000s, when Judy Gubler was hired as our city manager, she instituted a public safety model that cross-trained law enforcement, fire and EMS, and relied heavily on, on volunteers. And that model actually worked very well for us. I don't remember personally ever, ever hearing a complaint about response times or anything else. Data probably supersedes my recollection. But it, it was a pretty effective system. And I threw that, threw it out there that that's another option. If, if the budgets simply aren't going to accommodate, you know, what the, the plan is or the anticipated needs, then, then we've got to do something. And as Mayor Rosenberg indicates, district is one option. Or for us to come up with the, the revenue through property tax increases likely, I'm guessing. I don't know where else they would come from in our case. But our residents are going to be required to pay for the improved service regardless, right? We all agree that that's, you can call it what you want, but it's going to show up on, on the, on your tax statement as, as a, a charge for that. I'd, I'd like to make a really general statement, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. We, we really cherish the relationship that we have with Santa Clara and believe that, that what we have done together, both in shared resources and these, these inter-local agreements have benefited both of our cities tremendously. And so speaking for me personally, I would really hope that we can figure these, these things out. So that, because I think we're stronger together than we are separately. I believe that's been borne out, but you know, with the law enforcement agreement. But anyway, I think, I think that to highlight the, and I think of other council members might have some questions about volunteers. Uh, that, that certainly has been an issue in our council meetings at home, which we have another one up tomorrow night. And Chief, you've introduced a lot of information here that I personally haven't seen before and wonder if this might be available to our council to review. Cause this is going to be a discussion item for us tomorrow night. This is not a meeting where final decisions are being made by either council. And we would sure like to have that to look at because it was highly informative to me personally.
Yeah, that's not a problem. And I concur that I think the reason neither of our cities has had to do a truth and taxation over the life of the agreements is because of the agreements. The, the cost savings that both cities have enjoyed during the life of the, um, the police agreement and the fire department agreement has allowed us to not have to go through the property tax increase. So it's, I mean, it's, it's done great. And I, I don't think anybody, at least from my council and Santa Clara's council, is pushing for separation. Because I think that's probably the worst, the worst option out there. And so we, we're not real high on special service district. The meeting that we attended with the, the fire departments up Highway 18 was an interesting one. And one that I think Mayor Hart and I both left shaking our heads saying, no. Now we heard enough cats on a daily basis. We don't want to hurt those. And so I think we, you know, I like the plan as it's been presented and outlined because I think it's probably affordable for this year for, for both cities. We've got some, some more work to do this year as we start working on next year's budget. To make sure that we're addressing all the needs and we know how we're going to fund those. I don't think anybody's pushing for a property tax increase in the very near future. I think eventually we're going to have to do some, just because we can't put it off forever. There's a, a model out there where cities do property tax increases every year, but they're very small. And they just continue to do it and the citizens become accustomed to it. They're not big hits on an annual basis, but they continue to keep up with the costs. It's not something that I like to do, but I, if we're going to have to do it, maybe we look at that instead of a major increase. Having to deal with a major increase every 10 years, I'd almost rather deal with a very small one that kind of keeps up with the inflation and cost. And at the same time, exploring new things like come up with lately. What else can we do with staff? What else can we do to, to save money through that process? And, and develop, you know, volunteers to fill the shifts, but have people to fill the shifts. So we're not leaving the shifts empty. Um, so we've got the people to be able to respond and continue that work going forward.
With Mayor, maybe I, in the back of my mind and in the thoughts that we've had so far, there is growth that is contributing to the factor that we're going to need additional manpower, additional units, fire protection. And in my mind, one of the simpler solutions is to help growth pay for it. And that is through impact fees. Where you can assign impact fees to your public safety. And those impact fees could be increased for those new people coming in to help pay. Now, does it raise a, a cost? Absolutely. But who is the cost being raised to? I mean, a developer is going to get it initially, but then the home builder is going to have to pay for what they actually are creating as far as a need within various cities. So you're, there's an alternative, it would minimize what you would have to tax if you have income to take care of the growth. And that becomes a, a pretty substantial way of helping offset that cost.
That'd be a question for Dale, maybe is, or Matt? Is, I thought impact fees only paid for facilities, not for future manpower and back fees.
Yeah, you would, you would have to, you would have to identify capital costs essentially that you could apply those impact fees to. You know, the conceivably, the impact fee, the stream of revenue is not one that lasts forever, you know? Because it's only from new growth. And under state law, you wouldn't be able to use it for personnel, but there may be some things that it could be used for.
Like fire stations.
Yeah. And you're me, and, and it's so it's, it's basically directed at the cause or the increase.
Yeah.
And, and if you can, and, and where you're already master planning and general planning on a five-year basis for what you're going to do within. It basically becomes part of your plan, your budgeting plan and can therefore be applied if you're buying.
Truck, right.
Yeah. And there's other avenues of, you know, meaning impact ward, things that you can apply to for grants and so forth. But what I like is that the chief has come up with a really good plan that saves each community considerable amount of money. We, I mean, the wildland fires over the years have been actually a productive thing. Each one of our communities, because we've been able to get monies recouped. We actually got our wildland fire truck because of that, basically free after two years of collecting wildland fees. So there's a number of things. And I just think that we continue to work together to come up with those processes. Again, it's been a huge savings for each community to be combined. And, and I believe that our efficiencies in the police department and the fire department are much better than most of the other communities in, in the area that are on their own.
Can I ask Chief Parker a question? In, in your presentation, you said something about the west side of Ivins, the Cana area not meeting what? I didn't catch what that meant. But is, what does it not, with the new staffing, what was you able to do?
With, so yeah, I'm not sure exactly what your question was. Obviously if we get the station staff, then they're going to cover that area. That's the area that's out of our coverage area.
Maybe I misunderstood. It had something, it said, can it had something about.
Correct. Yes.
Doesn't mean, yeah, that's what I'm doing. Well, it said the Cana area. I thought it had something with the fire pumping or something.
I think, are you talking about the ISO for that, for that area, the rating?
That's what I was referring to.
The full staffing there?
Yeah. Okay. So it'll, everything will be there.
Exactly. We could go, we staff it whenever that is determined. We would probably go out and have that ISO inspection done. Absolutely. That's the time.
I have a holistic questions if that's okay. First of all, I am curious and I noticed that everybody else is curious because they all wrote it on their papers. How did we get from the 625,000 down to the 80,000 just based on staffing? What's the staffing difference?
So I have line items, so that, that was in that presentation about 380, uh, 390, I think it was. Down to 325 is basically what our current personnel would be. So you take that difference and then all of the line items that I gave. So capital, there's capital costs. The wildland trucks, 80,000, I think it was, I'd have to look at, I don't have my note with me, but you have to look at those line items. Safety gear was 16,000 and goes through quite a few items.
Okay. I'm sorry, if you could. What you said was in, within staffing that you were able to cut it that much. So what's the difference in your staffing from the 625 that was presented a month ago to the 80,000 that's presented today? What's the, what actual physical changes did you make to make that big of a difference in one month?
So we reduced the profile this fiscal year from whatever the number was down to 12 assigned positions. Those assigned seats reduces that salaries and wages. And then all the other line items, so gear and equipment, fuel, wildland cost, wildland overtime. Um, and then all the other line items. So gear and equipment, fuel, wildland cost, wildland overtime. And again, I have to look at the sheet exactly, but I forwarded, uh, my, you guys can, should see it. Each line item, what we're reducing. And that's, that's basically where that comes from. And then what we did too, again, we, I think generally is how much does a personnel cost? We had that three hundred and thirty thousand. But we had our finance manager, when she was here, we basically took people that we, we were going to have on our list, move into those spots. And then she run a spread, she ran a spreadsheet with her FICA and all of their health benefits to actually see exactly what are, what is their cost? Not just a general captain cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We took that individual, what's their hourly rate? And that's some of the other, um, things I don't think was in those discussions, maybe on both uh, financial side. So that's really, we did it, we did a direct analysis of what is the personnel cost? And those things are all available, those spreadsheets. We'll get them right to you. So.
And then if I could continue, you said that, um, you were, would have the, the Center Street Station staffed with two personnel and then supplement that with volunteers. My question in, with that is, are you taking from your original five at Rachel's station, the two from that original and moving them over there?
Yes.
And so that's when you were talking about the, the minimum standards at your Rachel's station. That, that gives you the minimum standards because you're still having the three.
Uh, we had an extra, so we're gonna, we're gonna move them over. And that's another personnel cost that we were running at Rachel. But we need, they need to have a partner. So we can't just move them up there with one person. That was, so trying to, like I said, hours and hours looking at all this. So how can we do this? Meet the minimums, but get that thing.
It's not an additional two, it's just rearranging.
Correct. Exactly.
And then you mentioned that they, they would be staffed with the eight local volunteers. What, I noticed that you have, uh, twenty-one part-time and eleven volunteers on your roster as of yesterday. So what? Is it just those eight volunteers that you're going to be pulling from? Are you pulling from the part-timers as well?
That would be up to you guys to decide, honestly, because we have to, uh, make sure they have safety gear, make sure they have a uniform. So our, I have eight on the volunteer, on the volunteer, um, names, but we can look at that. Whatever the number would be, let's say we had eight, we have to put them in a uniform. So none of them have uniforms. It's just the working staff. It's eighteen hundred dollars per person, multiply by eight, and go get your uniforms, come back. Now you're ready to work in the station. So that's one part of the thing. Plus their equipment, are they, do they have expired equipment? Some of our current staff have stuff that's close to expired. All those discussions have to be made. So if we have the money to outfit them and put them in safety gear, then let's, let's do it. Let's bring them on. And, um, and then working out, I know, um, I think there has been discussions with other agencies, how they work their shifts, but I have some ideas of mine. Maybe commit them to one a month, something to that effect is what we need to do to say, hey, I think that would be a good idea. Hey, one shift a month, two shifts a month. We actually get them assigned, you know, a calendar. So that's how that would work.
So previously, when you were, um, reevaluating your, your staffing, I believe you said that they were required to work twenty-four hours, twenty-four, a twenty-four hour shift to stay active. Is that correct?
That's for the part-time, we want them on a twenty-four hour shift, correct?
And would that just be one twenty-four hour shift per month?
So the way, the way that is in that agreement is to, for our safety, basically our safety team, they want two shifts a month. That's what we, what we want. Exactly. And then volunteers are thirty percent of, of the calls. Basically, they come in, they have to have thirty percent of the calls. We're supposed to respond to them.
Say, say that, I'm.
Thirty percent of the.
Volunteers would be required to participate in thirty percent of each monthly call.
I don't know about monthly, but that's what's on their contract. I'd have to go, it's over there, but it's thirty percent is right on the agreement. So. And that's, it says in their neighboring district.
And so they would be required to be at station when the, the staffing of the volunteers, they would be required to be at station during their shift and not respond from anywhere else.
That's an option. There's a lot of ways we can deploy the volunteers. We can have, again, they can come to the Rachel's station now and work two hours. It's up to the station, you know, make sure it works with their training and schedule. Um, but I think it's, hey, we get the volunteers, can you work? Can you commit to one? At least I think that's a good idea. One, that's something I know I've worked with previous, um, our departments is want to shift a month. And if you can commit to that, then that's helpful to, to boost that staffing.
And then I have one more kind of silly question in regards to that is if you're only requiring one shift per month from a volunteer, why are they needing to purchase a uniform to look good at the station if they're only there once a month? Why not just have their gear, which most of them already have? Why, why are we requiring a, a uniform to make them look better?
Sure. That's a great question. Yeah. So it's, it obviously is to make them look more professional, but NFPA requires, uh, the uniform that we have is dual compliant, so it meets structure firefighting rating and also vegetation response. So when they get a vegetation call, the new uniform that we have, they just wear these pants, they put their coat on and they're ready to fight wildland fire. They have to have the proper boots. You wear these boots out there in, in, um, the hot ash, the glue comes apart and they fall apart, right? So we have to have them in the proper boots. Same thing with, um, they're working at the station, they have to have steel-toed shoe rated. So if something falls on their foot, that's what, that's why. It's not just, professionalism's good, but it's, it's all for NFPA and we could go over all that anytime if you'd like.
No, thank you. I'm just asking some questions that were, I'm sure will be asked. So thank you.
Let's see, um, Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, just, just a follow-up. So Chief Parker, um, your plan to have the, the staffing of six people at Center Street. When we talked about that in, in June, I think you indicated that you could make that happen almost instantly, um, you know, maybe within a month or so. Once Center Street was renovated, which I think we're, that's pretty much done or close to being done.
Correct.
And is it, am I misinforming myself about that? I mean, can, if, if we approved the budget increase, which has to me been the holdup for you, you'd be pretty much ready to move right away and Center Street would be staffed?
Correct. Yeah. So this, they, they worked at the station on the fourth and the twenty-fourth crews did, and it's up and running, ready to go. The only thing is the alerting is going to be done within the month. Working with your guys' finance officer, um, to make sure they come down to both stations at the same time. They don't want to go down and come back up because it charges a travel fee and such. But, so other than that, yes. And then also I don't believe it's a budget, um, amendment, correct? Rock, would just be a transfer of, yeah, correct. So less, less, uh, financial work to do so. But yes, we would, we have those personnel, correct? So, so Mike on that, so as he says, it can be happened immediately. It does, there is a process of going through and hiring and getting every, all paperwork done. So, so it's not necessarily. Yeah, we're going to have a fair process, obviously, tomorrow on there. Yeah, interview up and running full time. So we could do within, I'm thinking a week, you know, get, get those folks in here, get them interviewed, score them, and then.
I'm calling that immediately.
Sure. Are you, are you finished, Mike?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question in regards to your alert system, your automatic alerting system. My understanding is that until St. George, if they decide to join in, that it will not be a complete system for you. Because our, our, um, mutual aid agreements, you know, they would be our, our backup. And if they don't have that alerting system, then it doesn't help our communities with the alerting system. And so we need to have it in full, full action with all of them and our fire, our St. George Fire Chief is not in agreement with using that. So how is that going to benefit us if it doesn't get used by everybody?
Sure. I can't speak upon, obviously, Chief Stoker's operations, but they have the alerting system. I think what would be good is have whoever, folks here would go and we'd do a walk, go to the dispatch center, go to the stations, actually look at that equipment and see what it actually does. And then we can all be on the same page. But yes, so the alerting equipment, the hardware is in the station. It will, like Washington City is using it currently. It's an alerting, the tones go off. Those agreements, again, we have, actually have a meeting tomorrow, um, with chiefs that discuss on how we're going to program, um, that system. That's the discussion. Now, we could, let's say, let's just say, um, Hurricane Washington and ourselves, we're going to use it to its maximum potential. Maybe St. George would be a page out. So we get, if there's a fire up, um, the fifteen, they want a water tender, we'll send them. We still have our staff here. Um, and then maybe St. George just gets a page. That page would go, we've, even where I was at, we had these alerting systems, certain folks didn't necessarily, they didn't, uh, wasn't beneficial for them. Maybe to participate, they would get their B C, we'd get a page. Once that B C gets paged, he can say, oh yeah, sure, we'll send you this. Or no, we're going to hold off. We have a big fire going in our city. That's how that works. So they're still getting the, um, alert. They just, the decision-making process is not automatic. So, but yeah, I wouldn't, we need to, I would like to have us walk it and look at all the, the stuff in the features. So they know it would be helpful.
What's the, the reason that Chief Stoker's hesitant?
Yeah, and I don't, the meanings I've had, I, that's, that's not, that's not even the case. From my understanding, yeah, it's, it's, this is all part of, um, our meetings. We'd had a meeting, let's say it was two weeks ago, we're having one tomorrow to continue this conversation.
Is it a budget issue with his council?
I have to defer to him on this. I don't even know the specifics.
I can make that call.
And I don't, I don't even think we're there yet on that, um, nor is he. It's just, we have to sit and talk and there's a lot to talk about. So.
Questions, comments, councils? So Chief Parker, um, in your presentation, it appears that you intend to continue to utilize. Now, there's a difference between part-time and volunteer, right?
Correct.
And so are you going to continue to, uh, employ, if you will, both of those categories of, of the?
Absolutely. That was our intention from the day when you guys said, hey, we want to hybrid. That was our intention. We, like I said, eight was the number I have and I could, we could go through the names, but we're not going to do that. We've moved some around and moved some back over, but eight is what we have. And then we do have an assistant that would make nine. A special assistant volunteer, but as far as those firefighters are eight, that's kind of what we budgeted for. My budget for my uniform allowance included, hey, we'll get those folks staffed. Or I'm sorry, in their uniform and then their gear. So.
So the utilization, I mean, they, they are two different categories, right? One, one has a certain set of requirements and the other has a different set of requirements. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, we'd have to go line by line.
Okay. So, um, for someone to be able to participate as a part-timer, there, there are some requirements that they would have to meet. Some of them are, are legislated, right? Are there, they're just requirements that aren't yours necessarily? They're just.
Correct. Yes. Different hours, labor laws, and then obviously our agreements, city policies, all those things.
And then the volunteers, that would be, um, a second subset. You're saying that if they qualify and assume that, that there are things that you are, are going to require that they are, are either like certified and, you know, in physical condition, suitable to be able to respond to fire, those kinds of things, right? But there, but there aren't any full-time staffing requirements for them, or did I hear that wrong? So is there a?
Thirty percent of the calls.
Oh, response. Correct. Yes.
But banning the station, I'm sorry, is what I'm trying to.
No.
No, no requirements. They, they, they can come and go as they please.
Exactly right.
But they, they are required when, when, when a call comes in to respond to at least thirty percent of them.
Yeah, I, I literally, I pulled one gentleman's agreement out and looked to make sure. And it says right there, I may have it in my files over here, but yes. So, yeah. We would love for them to commit. As I think you said in his present, commit to a shift a month or some. Yeah, that's, that's pretty traditional. That's something we actually is, hey, you know, we, you know, you come in at this shift and then making a, you know. That would be preferred to have them if they're working. Yes, we want continuity with our crews. So we don't want to shift exchange at night and shift change in the morning. It's like, hey, that would be the most ideal is to get them, um, you know, with those staff, continuity with them.
So Chief, if someone came off the street today that had all the requirements and you had to suit him up, what would that cost? So having, having ready to get it so he could be a part of the team.
Sure. So, yeah, I, we can look at the files, but forty-five hundred is basically the profile on their safety gear and then, um, a ten for their uniform. That's their safety equipment. Um, and then other, any other certification things we'd have to pay for. Oh, there we go. So, um, the numbers are right, but, but that's basically like the wide, this is from Widener, they come in the outfit, all the safety stuff. So four thousand five hundred and ninety-five cents. That's for the, all the P T E. And then they have this uniform they have to put on, that's eighteen hundred dollars.
So every, every volunteer that came in, it had cost us around sixty-eight hundred, seven thousand dollars to get ready, right?
Right. Plus the face piece, I think we came out to seventy-five hundred, the mask. So that mask right now, it needs to be, um, they should have their own for health reasons, but also for safety. So it fits on their face. And then they do a, um, a computer runs a safety test and they move up and down and do different things. That should be done annually to make sure that they're in compliance. Then maybe their face got smaller or whatever. Then we got to get them a different mask. So.
So what is that number again then?
About seventy, sorry, seventy-five hundred-ish.
For just the face mask, prefer?
No, for everything.
That's everything.
So when we have volunteers, we're put out about seventy-five hundred dollars. Yes. Same with part-time people?
Correct. Yeah. And that's if, um, correct. Yes. If it was, there were a new hire.
And is there any chance for two part-time people to cover shift? So they only have twelve-hour shift? Because I know some people are working and some are not. Is that a possibility?
That is, but on that, like I said, it's all just numbers. It's financial and there's obviously the human side of it, but it's, that's, we can do what we want, but it's going to cost, it always doubles as we move from twelve to four. Yep.
I mean, if you had two of them that would commit to enough shifts in the year to cover, you know, the same as a single version.
Yeah. And that's where we go right back to the beginning of this presentation and go, if I would have come in and everything was working, it was staffing was, then that would have worked. That's why we've moved to where we're at, because it wasn't working. That's, that's it. It's that simple with, you know, working with these, my administrators. It's like, I can't, we can't. It's, that's the whole problem, working with the city manager. It's, this is the number one thing. When I came in, it was like, we can't get.
Some agreeance on a core, your core. And I've always said that we need more firefighters. Okay, I agree with that. But I'm, I know when I've been on it, I was a volunteer. And when you show up and there, a few more people are there, you know, that obviously they're covering a shift, they're part of the true staff, but volunteers, if they show up and can help you out, put up the hoses and all that stuff, it makes a difference.
I think our call profile, which would be different from years past, it's different. We're, maybe an agency to the north of us around a hundred and fifty calls a year. Yeah, they're getting to those calls. Maybe they come in on Saturday, but when you're getting fifteen hundred, two thousand calls, that's almost a marker for building a new station. So it's like, they cannot get to that. That's the problem. And then they have to be, fill those obligations with certification. To be able, somebody has to be able to operate the pump.
Yeah. No, I'm just looking, we're just trying to make sure we understand the cost and, because all it relates to budget, but also relates to personnel and our little communities. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just felt like I needed to clarify that, um, how I said it in regards to Chief Stoker. He said that, um, they're having a difficult time finding a system that works, that connects all of that together. So even they, even though places all have their own, it's finding the right system that brings it all together and that the systems that they're, um, looking at are very pricey. Not just the system that you're putting in that they put in, but it's the system that connects everything together is on top of that extremely pricey. And he's not willing to, at this point, to pay that kind of money for, to, yeah, to network it. So I just wanted to clarify. He didn't say no, but.
I've already texted him. I'll have to say sorry.
Follow up on that. Two, two questions related to this, because we've just, as you know, given you to go ahead and get that. Is it operational at some level, even without the central nervous system of being a part of it? In other words, how, how valuable is it? We're talking about fifty thousand dollars and, and I'm being completely inexperienced in this arena. I'm sitting here thinking, wow, that's a lot of money to go from a buzzer to a, whatever that tone is going to be that's coming out of that fancy machine. And, and it's not doing any more than that now, is it? Or elaborate?
Yeah. So now it's a paging system. It comes through the paging and it makes noise. The system, what it's designed to do is reduce the P S A P time, the call taken and processing times all go down just when we get it installed. But the load that, the full build out of it, loading the call type. So if we get, um, somebody has chest pain here, that computer will know what we want from Santa Clara Ivans, Medic Engine thirty-one, Medic thirty-one, respond. That has to be put into the system. We haven't done. That has to be put into the system. We haven't done that yet, that's what this meeting, hopefully tomorrow, is to discuss that part of it. Whether or not any other agency plays with us doesn't matter necessarily, because they're going to get, they can, we can build us what pages them. If we get a fire here, it'll, it'll send, listen, Engine thirty-one, it'll send maybe forty-one and sixty-one right on the ticket. It'll page, um, St. George Battalion Chief, can we get Engine twenty-seven? That's negative, they're out on a call. That's how that would work. So we would be using it, that's regardless of our neighboring agencies that participate. So, so yes.
It does, and in. In your opinion, it has justifiable value, even, it's.
Absolutely, and that's why everybody is using it, because it, it, it does. And they wouldn't, nobody else would be using it, especially with the Wasatch, everybody's using it. So it's, it's, it's technology that's been going maybe ten, fifteen years.
So this is the wave of the future regardless.
Correct.
Good discussion. Any other questions?
I got one more comment, that'll be fine. Because people come up to me and they, they made the statement, okay, how many ERUs do we have? And I was just using Ivans before, but we're estimating you guys about three thousand, let's say Ivan says forty-four, okay? But if you take that number, they say, what's that worth for our house, not to burn down or for us to have someone show up? And if you divide that number, seventy-five hundred into a million dollars, that's a hundred and thirty-three dollars a year per E R U. And so you go out to eat on a weekend and spend that much. So we got to, I think we need to really think about the value of having, if you're, if you're the one that needs the ambulance, a hundred and thirty-three dollars is nothing, but when we look at it as a whole, it's big dollars, and so.
Just wait, just wait until we ask for that in truth and taxation, we'll see how anybody's willing to give up dinner.
But, but I do think, I do think that is a reality. I, I think we have a great force, we've got, we've got great locations in this, and staffing them, again, I keep thinking that number is probably a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars per city to do exactly what I think we want. You know, this year, we're going to make it do with some cuts and, and things like that, but we're going to need those funds. And it is, it's pretty minimal when we look at that. I think, I think collectively, we can do it without, you know, a big burden to the residents and going back to this, you know, special service district, it will, ultimately Ivans and Santa Clara will pay the burden of that a lot more and then some, because now we cover all of that. So going, going that direction, it sound, it sounds great, but the burden will fall on us even more. And we won't have the control of saying, do we want to pay for that? Do we, you know, so I, I think the direction we're heading is great. I did have one question on the, on the volunteer, just thought, if, if they stay, again, I'm, this is all new to me, a twenty-four hour shift at, at the station, they're required to go out to do a minimum of thirty percent of the calls. Does that credit toward their time on the calls, on, on a volunteer?
Correct, so the current agreement is thirty percent of the calls responding from their house. So if we, that would be a decision, do we want them to commit to it? That'd be a completely different voluntary agreement. Come to a twenty-four hour shift once a month, that would be a discussion for, um, volunteer cap, or part-time captain that runs the volunteers and my team to kind of, you know, if there's other input, obviously, you want that to make sure, um, obviously, the volunteers have to commit to that, so.
It's just a question I had.
Mr. Chair, I, I think a real positive about this meeting, it's been wonderful to be here and discuss this with you, but going into the future, as we, uh, meet hopefully twice a year, right? As we begin budget work and so forth, is that we can talk about the specifics of this and determine what, what a feasible budget is for, for both cities. And then, and obviously, Chief Parker can work things around to make it happen. And Brock, thanks to you too.
Mayor, can I just make a comment? Yeah, just process, processing a lot here, uh, obviously. Um, just wanted to share, uh, something from Harvard Business Review article, uh, twenty-eleven, March. It has to do with culture and how culture trumps strategy every time. And so the best strategic idea is nothing in isolation. If the strategy conflicts with how a group of people already believe, behave, or make decisions, it will fail. Conversely, a culturally robust team can turn a so-so strategy into a winner. The how matters in how we get performance. So we're hearing a lot about the what tonight, unfortunately not able to talk about the how. Um, there's a lot to process here and certainly look forward to our continued discussion. The data shared tonight's been an ad of two. So I, I really look forward to our continued discussion, especially on the required versus ideal schedules for part-time. There may be a vision at play, but if we destroy the culture and the process, uh, we have problems. And so, um, I'd really like for a clarification, you know, what are the required by law standards versus what I ideally want a, a force to work with? And how do we get there? Do we get there in, uh, you know, six weeks? As seems to be the case, or do we get there over a staged, planned, phased approach? Which is what we've requested from Ivan City Council, in a hybrid model. Thank you, Mayor.
Other comments? I appreciate everybody being here and I appreciate this ability. I want to say thank you, especially to the firefighters, firefighters and policemen that are in the audience. We don't get you in the audience very often, we wish we'd see you more. But thank you for what you do. And also thank the other audience, we appreciate your attention, appreciate your willingness to come and listen. Thank you, Ivan City Council. We look forward to visiting your new chamber in January, if not sooner. First, no later than January, I'll say that. We can meet as often as we need to, and thanks to our council. Everybody, thank you, Chief, thank you, Chief.